Good morning, everyone. To our audience in person today and on our listening audience and viewing audience, we welcome all of you to our midsummer meeting. It almost seems as if school has just continued throughout. We have so many children taking part in our summer schools this year, which is a wonderful, wonderful thing. And extend greetings to all of you who are joining us today. If you would stand with me, please, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now for our treasure hunter pledge. As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you, and you may be seated. We do have a public hearing on our agenda today. I will open the public hearing now. It is for the proposed adoption of amendments to school board policies, student progression plan, and code of student conduct. Are there any within the audience that wish to speak to this agenda item today? Seeing none, Mr. Superintendent will receive your recommendation.
Recommend the board adopt the proposed amendments to the student progression plan for elementary, middle, and high school, and the code of student conduct as submitted.
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, with the motion. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will now close the public hearing and move into the business portion of our meeting. Is there a report from our unions today? Okay, I don't see one for either group. We will then move to our consent agenda. Board members, could I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Mills, a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any conversation? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Mr. Superintendent will receive your recommendation for the consent agenda items.
Recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Before we take a motion on that, are there any items, board members, that you wish to remove from the consent agenda for separate discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion to accept the consent, I mean, we have a recommendation to accept the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Mills, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Board members, I would just bring to your attention that we always have strictly for informational purposes, information contained in that consent agenda about all of the charter schools. So if you would please make time to look at those and stay abreast of all of those reports as they're given to us. Mr. Superintendent, we will move now to your reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, I want to recognize Mr. Jason Martin, who you just approved. He will be the new principal of Westgate K-8. He's not here. He's on an airplane flying back from New York. He was up visiting family. And Mr. Martin has served the last three years as an AP over at Westwood. But before that, he was a principal up in Connecticut and New York. So he's got a lot of experience, and he knows our system well. So we're very excited about Mr. Martin. And as you can see in front of you, we've got the book for you, Change Your World. So I saw your faces light up when you were looking at it. So we will be doing a book study with some of our cabinet members. Some of our principals have utilized this in their school centers. And it's by John Maxwell and Rob Hoskins. So I hope you enjoy that. There's a lot of good insights that are in the book. It's kind of unique because we're in the middle of the summer. So there's really not a lot that's happening right now, except for summer school. And what I would like to announce, that in our first session, we've had about over 5,000, about 5,400 students that were in the first session. We've got about the same amount right now at the elementary schools. And with our Century, 21st Century, we have that at seven schools. And then we've got our middle and high school credit recovery. So that's been going very, very smooth. We're in the second phase right now of, it's not summer school, it's learning adventure camps. Sorry, strike that from the record. It's learning adventure camps. And visiting the school centers, the students are really having a good time. And it's meeting the needs that we have right now. And we're in the middle of session two, and we have three more weeks left. So after this week, then we'll have, oh, we really have two and a half more weeks left of that. Sam Gaines Academy was accepted as an Amazon Future Engineer Program School. It's a conference of childhood-to-career program aimed at increasing access to computer science education for children and young adults from underrepresented and underserved communities. Sam Gaines Academy will be supplied with computer science material and curriculum from Project STEAM, including introductory courses in computer science programming with languages like Python and other advanced computer sciences. So again, they've been accepted as what's an Amazon Future Engineer Program School. And then next month, or in September, we'll recognize this next student. This is a rising senior at Fort Pierce Central High School, who was named one of the 15 highest achieving STEAM students honored at our Sunshine State Scholars Conference. So one of the top 15 in the state of Florida. It's LaRica Cherry. And we'll recognize her and bring her in here in, hopefully in August. That's the first day of school, and we meet again on August 10th, so it might be tough. But we'll get her in here to recognize her as well to the board. That's really all the comments I have for today.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Board members, typically at this time, I would read in a motion to accept all of the superintendent's actions during the state of emergency. But at this time, the governor has lifted that state of emergency, and Mr. Harrell has prepared the resolution concluding those orders. So we have that before us, board members, to vote on, which gives final authority and read into the record totally, all of the votes that we have taken with regard to the superintendent's actions during the state of emergency. If I could have a motion to approve that, I would certainly appreciate it.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. And Dr. Mills with the second. Any conversation? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Mr. Harrell, do you have a report for us?
No, I'm chair.
Thank you. We'll then move to our school board member reports. And part of our function today, board members, is to evaluate the superintendent's overall performance. Typically, I ask for a motion, either for satisfactory overall performance or unsatisfactory overall performance, and then we can enter into discussion if necessary.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Mr. Kelly?
Make a motion to approve satisfactory.
Satisfactory motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any conversation with regard to this? Discussion about the motion and his performance. The motion is to have a satisfactory overall performance rating for the superintendent's for this prior year. Okay? Yes, it is.
So this is a board meeting where the board, we have a conversation. So in regards to Mr. Jen's review, I would like to thank everyone for stepping up to the plate for such an unprecedented time and work together to make it through this challenging season. Is this what we're supposed to be doing right now? Thank you. You were able to change the direction, team at the drop of a hat, to meet COVID protocols, and I applaud you. I truly, truly appreciate everything that you have done over this year. Mr. Jen would always say that what he does is a reflection of his staff. So I want to take this opportunity, even though it's a review of Mr. Jen, to thank you, because it's a wise person that surrounds himself with awesome people. So in that respect, I truly, I can't say enough about your capabilities, the things that you did or have done to keep the district, the school district, running without hardly missing a beat. So thank you. We have the unveiling of the diversity project, highlighting diversity in the workplace. It is very, very needed, welcome, inspiring, motivating, empowering, and makes for an even more successful environment. I want to say thank you to Dr. Prince, Dr. Perry, Mrs. Woolard, Mrs. Dunn, Dr. Sanchez, who was the presenter, Mrs. Martin, and Mrs. Morales, Mrs. Davis, and Mr. Jerome for the hard work and thought that went into this presentation. Very, very needed and welcome. It was amazing, to say the least. I'm going to take the time to reiterate the benefits that stood out to me. Bringing together a community, increasing diversity in our workforce and community, enhancing building programs for our student, that means mentoring, leadership with diverse leaders and educators we have working in our district and community. We all know that knowledge is power. I will take it further and state that applied knowledge is where the true power lies. We will see in the next year how this knowledge is applied, and how much more successful our students are, especially the ones that need truly, to have the trajectory of their lives changed. Whenever I have a conversation with Mr. Jen, and I'm sure you can all attest to this, his first response is, how well the school district is doing? We are the best. We are number one. We are close to being. We are. He always has a very positive outlook, right? I'm not disagreeing. Yes, the school district has improved definitely since I've had children in school. The district has evolved as you, the team, has evolved. Again, you are great, awesome, amazing. And again, you know, thank you seems like, you know, just words, but, you know, I really do appreciate everything. But there is always room, Dr. Mills will say, for improvement. However, per my conversations with our residents, community, constituents, we have some areas that needs to be addressed. What I refer to as the weak link, and we are as strong as our weakest link. We have some weak links, and I would like to see them strengthened. We have some schools that need improvement. I believe the school district should look more closely at the schools, these schools, with a new and a different perspective. We are in the business of education and should do whatever it takes to make sure our students are given a fair chance at success, not just be a statistic. Again, some of our children are not college bound, but they can be successful according to their ability. I know that we strive for excellence in our district, but not at the expense of our students. There are safety measures in place for emergencies and COVID, and I want to thank our custodial department. Here is the community's concern with our children returning to brick and mortar. Are the HVAC system working as they should, even with the addition of the bipolar ionization? There is a new variant, and we need to make sure our students are safe and that our HVAC is working at its optimum. I want to look at the last six five-year plans submitted to the state with an emphasis on the HVAC replacement. I'd like to talk about communication. The greatest of, we talked about the four pillars, communication, community involvement, customer service. The greatest of these is communication. I am of the opinion that communication from the community should be heard at our board meeting, scheduled or not. Our community needs to be heard. It's their children. Who knows? It might just increase community and parental involvement. I realize that in the presentation, Mr. Jen, you were talking about communication that comes out of the school district. But it goes both ways. The school district needs to hear and consider the community as well. In spite of my concerns, the school district has had a very challenging, overwhelming year. Again, Mr. Jen surrounded himself with an amazing team that rose to the occasion, and the district kept going, did very well, all things considered. But to reiterate, there is room for improvement. Our community believes that there are children who are falling through the cracks or just going through the process on a very wrong trajectory. Who we can save if we just spend the time to strategize and make some modification? In conclusion, I would like to point out that my job is to hold Mr. Jen accountable in the same way the community and my constituents hold me accountable to bring fresh perspectives, even when we must have hard conversations. I would be remiss if I did not factor all that went into making 2021 the year it was when considering Mr. Jen's review. Therefore, I'm giving Mr. Jen a satisfactory with concerns, some of which I've listed. We will reconvene next year for his yearly review, at which time we would see if what concerns our community concerns our district.
Thank you, Mr. Jen, and thank you, Madam Chair. Are there other board members that wish to have comment? Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes, ma'am. I, for one, am just very grateful for Mr. Jen's leadership. I think that when you look across the state, we're probably far out, probably one of the best. And then when you look across the nation, because the state of Florida did so well, that puts us higher than most school districts in the nation. And I want to thank Mr. Jen for that, because when I look at my brother in Colorado and look at his kids, and they're falling behind, and they've never gone to school, and I look at kids in New York, and I look at my other nephews, and I think, I said, my God, what's going on with these kids? Thank God for a leader like Mr. Jen in our community. He's able to cross lines. He's actively involved in our community, and I really do appreciate that. And some of the concerns, Mrs. Richardson, that you discussed, and I heard you say that, but a lot of that falls on us too, as board members. As we start community talks, that's a lot of our responsibility. I can understand Mr. Jen's responsibility, but it's our job. I've set up community talks, and as a board, that's something that we should be discussing at master board, and the direction that we want to go as a school district and as a school board. Because that, as we learn our responsibility as governance, you know, we're policy setters. We're the ones that set the direction. We're the ones that understand what's going on amongst the school district. And as a team, we have to lead Mr. Jen. So that's something that's crucial as a board, that we get on the same page and go in that direction.
I totally agree, Mr. Ingersoll. And the things that I discussed were not outside of what's happening here. Again, the phrase I use, which I coined from Dr. Mills, is room for improvement. The things that are actually being done, it's just that we need to probably step it up, or, like I said, take a closer look at some areas.
Oh, I understand, Mrs. Richardson, by far. But when we start talking about rooms for improvement, some of the schools that we're lacking, I just hope that you analyze it and see how much has gone into that, how much extra staff has gone into that, how much support staff, district leaders have been infused. So technology, I mean, the list can go on, behavior techs. So when we look at it, you know, because people look at our school district, and they see all this money, and they divide it out, but they don't see how we've divided it out, and how we've tried to revitalize Westwood, how we've tried to revitalize Sam Gaines, how we've tried to, you know, St. Lucy Elementary. And you see these schools improving. So, you know, if you see where we've been 15 years ago, and see where we're now, I mean, it is light difference. And it takes a while. Dr. Mills has seen it, and I see Ms. Holly's seen it. And I know Jack has seen it over the last 15, 20 years that we've been together, not on the school board, but in the community. And it's just been incredible. And we've gone light years within the last five years with Mr. Jen's supervision and leadership. And his leadership is, like you said, has transcended into our cabinet, into our principals. I mean, we have like a totally different group of principals. We have a new mindset. It's the key I do. And we will be one of the top school districts here pretty soon. You know, that's the reason why I'm running again, is because I'm a winner. I want to be on top. And I know that Mr. Jen's going to put us there.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. And again, I'm not saying that, Mr. Jen, all I'm saying is there is room for improvement. I gave Mr. Jen a satisfactory because I believe that that is what is due, but with concerns. We have to look at these areas that we need to look at with a magnifying glass. We can't just let them fall through the cracks. We can't just let it go. We have to start focusing on these weak links. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Dr. Mills?
I don't know where to start. I've heard both of my board members make their comments. And I appreciate what you're saying, Ms. Richardson, to the utmost, because as it was said several times, I firmly believe there's always room for improvement. And yet, I appreciate what you are saying, Mr. Ingersoll, because improvement has taken place under Mr. Jen's supervision. So we are moving in the right direction. Yes, there's room for improvement, even as a board, because we have two new board members on. We need to ensure that we continue to work together as one. And that means everybody's input is extremely important, and that we can always grow from where we are. Having said that, and nothing's perfect, you know? I mean, that's like a fantasy if you think everything's perfect. But we have come a long way. I have witnessed that since I have been on this board since 2010, an extremely long way. And I believe we still have an extremely long way to go. So we are moving in the right direction, and that is my satisfaction in making sure that I give Mr. Jen a satisfactory. You have done a phenomenal job, just being human, right? But you've done a great job in so many areas, and I look forward to those areas that Ms. Richardson is talking about, that we do look on those weak areas and strengthen them as well. But, Mr. Jen, you have done a phenomenal job, and I appreciate your work.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Mr. Kelly?
You put it a different way. Maybe just an analogy. I just had my 56th, 50, I got to remember it right, 57th wedding anniversary. And 57 years, my wife's been taking care of me and trying to train me. And yeah, there's room for improvement, she says, a lot of room, whether it's going uphill or downhill. She, you know, she's going to work on me and make me improve and address all her concerns. I look at it a little bit different than you do, okay? I don't think there's any immediate concerns at all with Mr. Jen or the staff. The concerns will be addressed by us. Mr. Jen works for us, any concerns we have, every time we meet, as of today, we're addressing concerns right now. So the concerns are addressed all the time, every day on a strategic level. So they always will be addressed. When I worked for the city, it was the same way. There's always concerns. Things change. Boy, did they change last year. We will always address the concerns. I don't think there's any concern at all as far as Mr. Jen. I think, I'll put it this way, we're very lucky to have Mr. Jen. It's my opinion, I don't know if it's anybody else's, we're lucky to have the staff. And you're right about the fact that a wise person has a great staff, and they put good people around them. That's what he's done. That's one of his strong points. But the concerns are addressed, whether diversity or anything else, they will be addressed. And it'll be addressed by you and all of us. Every meeting that we have, it will get better. I'm sure of that. So, Mr. Jen, that's all I can say, sir. And my wife's still working on me, and we'll keep working on the school board. We'll keep working on the whole system. Always room for improvement, Donna, right? That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Great analogy. Superintendent Jen, I, you know, we have had so many conversations over, over the past year especially, all of them, you have been open and receptive to everything that has been brought to you. I think it's really important for this board to understand that what we rate the superintendent on his performance is based upon all of the strategies that we share with him that we want implemented. So if there is room for improvement, which of course there always is, but it's upon us to share that burden with the superintendent and to work with you to make those strategies come to fruition. And if we take the three strategies that this board agreed upon for this past year, the response has been exemplary at all levels, from the superintendent to his cabinet to everyone that works in the St. Lucy Public School family. So I, you know, we're only able to do satisfactory or unsatisfactory. Satisfactory is not high enough in my realm. Watching what you have been through, the agonies and the decisions you have had to make, sometimes within milliseconds, has just been exemplary. No one could have imagined that something like COVID would come along and not only turn the world upside down, but school districts upside down, worldwide. And I am so proud of the way St. Lucy Public Schools has responded to that. There's not a single employee that didn't embrace the challenge and make this year exemplary, all things considered, for our students. So my thanks to you, Superintendent Jen. My pledge to you to continue to uphold and to work with you and to bring this district to the finest level it can be. As Dr. Mills said, when we came on board in 2010, it was a much different environment. So the growth we have witnessed and been part of, we should all be very proud of and just continue to reach for that high, high summit, which I know you will. And I appreciate your leadership and your cabinet's leadership more than you can even know. So I think everyone has had an opportunity to comment on that. We have a motion and a second on the floor for a satisfactory evaluation. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move-
Madam Chair, if I could, I always like to respond each year, and I used to always tell folks that the biggest, do you know what the biggest room in the world is?
The bathroom?
I heard that saying before.
All right, it's the room for improvement, okay? So we strive for that. We're a team of six in order for this district to be successful. I gave you guys a book, and I'm going to be sharing some of this information with our principals next week. But if you'll allow me to read for a second, there's one quote in here that talks about, "We all need each other." It's chapter three. And it's something from Chuck Swindoll, somebody who may be familiar with him. And he says this, "Nobody is a whole chain; each one is a link. But take away one link, and the chain is broken. Nobody is a whole team; each one is a player. But take away one player, and the game is forfeited. Nobody is a whole orchestra; each one is a musician. But take away one musician, and the symphony is incomplete." He goes on to say, "You guessed it, we need each other. You need someone, and someone needs you. Isolated islands were not. To make this thing called life work, we got to lean and support and relate and respond and give and take and confess and forgive and reach out and embrace and release and rely. Since none of us is a whole, independent, self-sufficient, super-capable, all-powerful hotshot, let's quit acting like we are. Life's lonely enough without playing that silly role." Life's lonely enough without playing that silly role. Let's link up." So, I think that's the great message, that we'll be as successful as we are as a team of six, working on the challenges that we have, and I can look forward to that. I appreciate, more than you'll ever know, the comments where we recognize our staff members because they're just unbelievable. When I left this district 21 years, 21 years ago, I remember how strong the staff was. And then coming back, you know, the staff that we've put together and the folks that were already here, nothing will happen without them. But it all starts with a team. It starts with a team of six that's at the dais. So, we have unique challenges that will be ahead of us every year that we're capable of meeting, and I appreciate those comments and look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just, I did not mention one thing. When you talk about metrics and measurement, one of the things that I measured, Mr. Gent, on, what did we have, Mr. Prince, or maybe somebody, you probably know, we had a 95% retention of our teachers this year, is it over 94? Is that what we had?
It's probably higher than that.
Is that about right? 95%?
96.
96%, yeah. Got to get it to that 98.3, you know? But that's a tremendous metric, and I, just staff and everyone else, that, when you hear things like that, that's just beyond, I don't, if there's any other school system has had that this year, especially with the year that we had. So, there were so many metrics that we could measure, but that one, it was really, really big, and I forgot to mention it, and I thank you for allowing me.
Certainly, Mr. Kelly. We now will move to our board member comments and reports. Dr. Mills, we'll begin with you tonight, or this morning?
Okay. First, I want to, again, well, this will be my first time at this particular board meeting, but thank the staff for your work. You get satisfactory too. Because, and what Mr. Gent was reading, what he just read, what I have experienced is that as I do contact different ones of you that are over departments, how quickly you respond and how we work together. And I do appreciate that, the diversity that Ms. Richardson brought up, the importance of that. Dr. Prince jumped on that, and Dr. Sanchez and others just jumped on that situation and helped to make a tremendous difference in a short amount of time. And so, and just the different ones that, I hate to start calling out names, but Terrence O'Leary, and of course, Bill Thomason and Helen Wiles, and it just goes on and on. I'm looking at my, I say my sister back there. Yes, that have done so much to make a tremendous difference as a team, together. We have accomplished much, and I'm very proud of St. Lucy County and what you have done as a staff. Even with improvement can always be looked at. And that's why you're so great, because you're open to that, and you can see that. Now, I also want to thank the Transportation Department today and the team that have worked to make it possible for the children to be able to get to their summer programs after our summer program. We Save Our Children has a summer program going on, and I am there almost every day right now, and I see the kids coming in after, many of them, after they've gone through the public schools' summer program and camp. And they're excited about what they're experiencing within our district. And they come in and talk about the things that they did, you know? We ask them, "What have you done today in school and at your camp?" And they're excited. And Transportation, I'm glad that we are not charging the children to come to the after school program, which, what we have here with our summer program. So, thank you so much, it's made it so much easier for the parents. We have actually waived our fee. We have a registration fee at Save Our Children that we waived this summer because everybody's dealing with the after effects of COVID. And not just the active effect, but we still, COVID is not gone yet. We like to think it's gone, but it's still around. And so, we have had a very challenging time this year. It's been, I mean, it's either like make you or break you type time with this virus that we've had to deal with, and we have done pretty good in spite of. So, again, thank you, Transportation. Now, I spoke with a doctor, medical doctor at Longwood this weekend, and I was sharing with her a lot of our successes. Mr. Kelly mentioned 96% of teacher retention, which is phenomenal by itself. But I mentioned a lot of the different successes that we have here in St. Lucy County Public Schools. And do you know she had- It's very involved, her and her husband. Her husband is like a stay-at-home dad, while the mom works 12 hours a day at Longwood Medical. And she was saying to me, I have never heard of even the graduation rate. And so, you know, what she, as she, we conversated, she said, you know, I told her, I said, "Well, we're on this, we're on that, we're advertising here, we're advertising there." And she said, "But I don't look at any of that." She said, "I don't look at those chains, even our website. This is a medical doctor, does not look at our website as a parent." And they're very involved in their parent, their particular classroom of that teacher that's teaching their child. They're very involved with that teacher and that classroom. But that's as far as it goes. And so, what, I said, "Well, give me a solution. What would you suggest that we do, since you're saying that it's not getting out enough?" And she said, "We need to put billboards up around the city and the county stating our successes." And she said, because there's a lot of, now, she did hear about a lot of negative stuff, and much of it wasn't even true, you know, people living in 2010, 2015. But she said, "I want, I think we," she said, "It needs to be in the people's face." So, I'm just encouraging our Communication Department, Mr. Gent. I know that we have a budget, we have only so much within that budget to do, but so much. But I would like for us to consider looking at what it would cost to put up billbo, you know, she said, she goes down 95 every day, back and forth to work. She says she looks at those billboards on the highway. US One, some of our main spots, even if it's just five of them. But to put the successes that we have had as a district so that it's in everybody's face, we've got to find a way where everybody will see it. And most people have to travel to and for work, so I think that would be, I thought that was a wonderful idea. Also, this medical doctor is a graduate from Westwood High School. She graduated the same year as my daughter, and she's a medical doctor. My daughter's a judge, right from Westwood High School. And to see the statistics of what's going on now at Westwood High School alone is phenomenal. But let's continue to make that effort where everyone in the community, all of the no-sayers cannot no-say no more because it's up there for everybody to see, and we're counteracting that, we're making sure it's in your face, St. Lucy County's success. And I'm sorry it took so long, but I had to get it out.
If that was a motion, I would be making a strong second, so.
Thank you, Dr. Mills.
Madam Chair, just, I just want to let Dr. Mills know one of the initiatives that we are doing. I was going to jokingly say, just get a new doctor, but then when I found out she was a graduate from Westwood, I was like, okay, stay with her. But one of the things that Lydia has done, and that we're working with the city of PSL right now, is that they have banners that are hung around the district. And so, we're going to be teaming with them and hanging up some of the good news and things that are going on in the school district periodically with the city. So, that will occur there. We'll be reaching out as well to the county and to Fort Pierce as well to try to do that, to get that, to get that information out. So, that is something that is, you know, we're working on, and we'll have a nice, we'll start this fall, in fact, within the next few weeks, with the city of PSL. And you've seen the banners, because I know you live down there, and we'll-
Mr. Gent, that was part of the agreement with the CRA agreement? That was part of it. And there's that big sign in front of the civic center that flashes, you know?
Right.
I was thinking about that, Donna, great minds, you know? But that's true. And some of the things that we can do, you're absolutely right. I think I said that at one meeting. It came out wrong, but that's what I was trying to say. We're good. How do we know Mercedes-Benz is a good car? That's an old adage, but you're absolutely right.
And she mentioned signs that flash it out as well, like, you know, so, yeah. Well, we're moving in that direction, but I want to know what it would cost. In fact, she asked me, like, as if she was thinking about donating, to have a billboard up. She said, "I want to know what it would cost to get one up," so.
Actually, in some instances, I'm sorry, in some instances, depending upon the season, we can get the billboards gratis if we do it the right way. Lydia and I, I'll talk to Lydia about that and tell her where to go for it. You can do it. Depends on how busy the season is. Political season, no.
Mr. Ingersoll?
Uh, no report.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Richardson?
There are just so many things through my mind right now. I wanted to, I'm working with an organization that, that works with children in the juvenile system. You know, I hate to beat this horse, but we don't, we are an awesome school district, hands down, hands down. That's not up for debate, hands down. I think we are doing things right. I think that, you know, the agenda that we have is in the interest, is in the interest of our kids. But at some point, it seems to me that it's about what I'm doing, you know, what we are doing, and, 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 and. And it's nice to get the pat on the backs. I'm all for that. But we have to remember the, that lost group. I call them lost, because in all of this success, some things get thrown at the side. And we don't want to acknowledge it or even, you know, because the success is so great, 98%, 96%, you know, whatever it is percent, you know? But it's those, it's those little things, those little children. I look at these babies, you know, and, but for the grace of God, could be me or my child, you know? And they don't have a voice. And we are, I'm here to be that voice, and I'm going to be that voice, you know, for these kids. I had a cat, I'm sorry, that was dying. Well, he wasn't dying, but he had a problem, an issue. And I had to drive from here to Jupiter every day with this cat, every day with this cat, for about two weeks. And every time I went, it cost me money, you know? And I'm telling you, I was tired. I didn't want to go with this cat. But when I looked at this cat and I realized that this cat depended on me, he didn't have a voice, he couldn't talk, that he depended on me, I had to go that extra distance. I had to get up, I had to take him. And one, one night, I was, and I thought, you know, I'm going to, this cat just got to go. It's just way too much for me right now. I had to even take out a loan to take care of this cat. And finally, finally, I said, "Lord, I'm going to, this cat is going to, just have to come to heaven, kitty heaven," you know? But that night, there was a turnaround, and this cat got up. How you know when somebody's feeling bad? Hallelujah, he's eaten, you know? And I know this cat was on the road to success. But it's not before I was on the brink of giving up. I'm saying that those kids, we need to rescue them because they are rescue elbow. And we need to look at them, we need to really take a serious look at some of them. We may not be able to save all of them, but let's save the ones that we can save and be intentional about it. That's all I'm saying. You know, hands down, and you are the brightest, you are the best, you are the finest, we can do it. We just sent a man to the moon or wherever it was, in space somewhere, on his own spaceship. We, nothing is impossible to them that believe. We can do this. Let's do this. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Mr. Kelly?
I think I'll wait. We have our, I have our meeting coming up, our all-day, yeah. I do have a response for you, Mrs. Richardson, and I think I'll wait until we-
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Okay, then it comes down to me, and we have spent a lot of time today talking about being a team, especially a team of six as we move forward, and, which leads me to our next conversation. Two weeks from today, we are scheduled for our master board training, which is an all-day event, and it takes the six of us. That's our opportunity to really set the course for the coming year, to air things out, to become, as Mr. Gent read from the book, links, to be able to stand arm-in-arm. But I have become aware that, Ms. Richardson, you have requested to attend remotely. Which, in my thought process, really takes away from what the intent of that day is. And with two new board members, really, it's, the main focus is for the two of you to become more integrated into this team. So, board members, we need to have a conversation today about whether we move forward with that master board training in light of the fact that one of our members will not be here in person.
I thought that we had to have it on, that was the last day to have it, Chris?
We've already moved it one time, and this was our next time available for the trainers from FSBA. We accommodated you one time earlier and moved it to this date. So, if you're not able to be here, I'm not sure that the intent of the master board training can be accomplished. It opens it up more so. We would have to have staff, we would have to have the IT connections, all of the things that take away, honestly, from building this team of six. So, board members, I open it up to your thoughts and conversation as to whether we move forward with this master board training, which I think is greatly, greatly needed as we work to strengthen those links.
So, if we don't have it on the 27th, I mean, we have 20 hours that we need to fill. So, if we don't have it on the 27th, that means that we'd have to have it later, which is going to push, make that other 16, 14 hours, we'd have to make up those 14 hours in a shorter space of time.
But FSBA's calendar is full. And if we don't take, because they've already accommodated us, as we accommodated you, to move that date. So, if we can't have it that date, we're without-
So, what is the alternative?
There is no, we do not have it, or we have it as a team of six. Or if it's the board's desire to have it with a team of five, then we do that.
Madam Chair, I-
Mr. Kelly?
And it's not a big deal. I, the first time we announced the date we were going to have it, I moved a small vacation and accommodated the board, you know? And if we do it again, I'm going to, I'm not going to have any vacation, no time to go away at all. So, addressing this, we addressed this when I was on city council with people calling in or whatever. First of all, it sets a precedent, so I'm never going to forget, because this is our job, this is what the public expects. We're supposed to show up for our job and be here. And the master board, I've been waiting for a month or two to talk about things like Mrs. Mills brought up, and some other things, and to answer some of the things you said. I don't want to miss the master board. I'm looking forward to it. It's my first year, I'm getting into my first year. But we never did it in all the years I was on city council. We didn't allow it. I understand on the TPO, you could, this year, the governor allowed people to call in, like when Troy had the COVID thing in the House, that was allowed. It's not allowed anymore. The governor says you can't do that anymore. I'm pretty sure I'm right about that. I'm looking at our attorney, it's not allowed anymore, that people can call into the boards. The governor has ended that.
What, with the removal of the declaration of emergency-
With the removal of the declaration of emergency.
Goes away.
The board no longer has.
Right.
The ability to meet without a quorum physically present in a single location.
So if somebody calls in or comes in, that way, they're not allowed to vote on anything, it would not, that's what I understand, but it would set a precedent that, so I, it would really, personally, if nobody wants, else wants, I'll go. I'll go with Mr. Jen, but I don't want to miss that date. They're coming, we made special arrangements, the people come in that, they're hired by the state or whatever, and this is the second time we've had it, so it would be, I want to have it and do it like we planned it. It's been planned for quite a while.
So, Ms. Richardson, with what you have heard today from Chairman Harley, is there a possibility that you can show up on that day so that we can have, because master board, from what I know of it, we only have it when we have a new board member, and we have two new board members, and your input is so extremely important, I would not want to meet without you. So is there a possibility that you can show up on that day and we can go forward with the date that we have?
So that would be the next two weeks. Let me, I have to consult, it's not just me, so if I could, I will get back with the chairman, maybe the end of this day, or maybe tomorrow?
I need to let FSBA know today. They know we're meeting this morning, so if you could let me know by close of business today.
Okay.
That will, but we, while we're here, need to make the decision that if you cannot.
No, let's go ahead with the meeting, let's get it done, get it over with, one way or another, so I'll get back with you at the end of the day.
So the understanding is, if you're not able to attend, the four board members and Mr. Jen will proceed?
Yes.
That we're not going to accommodate a remote?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I'm not quite sure I heard that right, so let me rephrase it in my simplest terms. If Mrs. Richardson's not here, there's no reason to meet.
It certainly detracts from the purpose of a master board training, but the four board members that would be in attendance, if you can't come, Mrs. Richardson, would be certified master board members along with the superintendent. Mrs. Richardson would not have that distinction nor the benefit of the master board training.
Yeah, but it's a little bit more about the master board training, it's about, it's about becoming a Super Bowl team and not having your team leaders there, your quarterback, your middle linebacker there, and your head coach, and if you're not on the same page, it just doesn't operate well. And everyone has to be in the same room, everyone has to feel the emotion, everyone has to see the looks, everyone has to see the body language, that's what it's about. It's about doing the activity, everyone gets in a straight line, and we're driving a taxi cab, and everyone wants to give different directions, and Mr. Jen's running, which way are we going to go? These are the activities that we do at master board, and everyone needs to be there, because if we're not there, then we're all on different pages, and when we go and we come back our next meeting, and we say, well, this is something I'd like to talk about, well, that wasn't what we discussed in master board. And I know that because I was the outlier quite a few times at master board, because I wanted to go in different directions. So, I mean, I understand that, but.
Well, that's, Mr. Ingersoll, while I mentioned, we have three options, the third option being we just do not do a master board training, which in my adebism is not the way for us to proceed. I think it's, I think it's much needed and much to be learned and gained for all of us, especially in light of what we've all been through this past year. So I need consensus of the board so that I can give direction to FSBA as to what the consensus of us would like to do.
Madam Chair, if you need a consensus, just know that I won't accept anything else but to have the master board. I've waited two or three months, there's things that we discussed, you have things you brought up that you want to discuss, so I could not imagine why you would miss that. But Troy, as to what you said, I'm going to say what I said on city council many times when something like this has come up. When you don't show up for your district, or Donna doesn't show up for it, or I don't show up, okay, that whole district doesn't have a voice when you don't show up, whether you miss a meeting or a master board or whatever it is, that voice for that district that you represent is not being represented, so look at it that way. Also, it does set a very bad precedent, that's the main thing I'm saying, but I want to have the master board, I'm sure, Dr. Mills, I'm sure you do too, but still like what you said.
Let's let Dr. Mills answer for herself, because I do need to know the consensus.
When you mention, Mr. Kelly, your district as a city council, as a school board member.
We have districts.
We have districts, but we look out for every single child.
So does the city council.
Regardless of the district is nonpartisan, you know, et cetera, so, and Ms. Richardson, I have heard her loud and clear, since she has been on this board, she is looking out for the least of those, bottom line, that's where she's coming from, from the very least. And so, like you said, we do need representation from all of us, because then it's a group that may be missing if we don't have that, and I, Ms. Richardson says she's going to do everything she can to see if she can be there, so, but even if she cannot, I'd say go ahead with the master board meeting, because we, I realize that we have to, we need to have that, we need to have that.
May I say something? I'm sorry. So when I called FSB.
SBA?
SBA, yeah, and I spoke to Tina, and there was no problems. I informed Chris, there was no, so this is the first time I'm hearing that there is an issue. Had I known before today, I would have come prepared with an answer or with a solution. So this is something that, like the superintendent says, the superintendent does not like to be surprised, I, as a board member, do not like to be surprised either. So I wish I had known this ahead of time, because I would have had an answer for you. However, I have said that at the end of the day, I will get back with you, Madam Chair, with an answer. Right now, I say, let's go ahead with the meeting, because it's important that we are on the same page, we are of the same mindset, because that's the way we are going to be, we are going to have a successful school district. So I am going to do whatever it is necessary for us to get to that place so that we can move forward, and hopefully that answers everybody's question or concerns.
Okay. I do need to insert here, in the matter of surprise, that it was quite a surprise to me as chair of the board that one of my members had gone to FSBA unbeknownst to me and requested special accommodations.
Again, I did not know what the protocol was.
You should have come to the chair about that.
I'm sorry, I did not know the protocol, and when I spoke to Chris, I just knew that they were the facilitator, so I figured I'd just go to them, because this would have been the second time. So now I know the protocol, and I will most definitely consult you as the chair.
And it also put FSBA in a tough spot, and I think the question you asked her was, is there a legal reason why I cannot participate remotely?
I think so.
Legalities aside, this is about building cohesiveness of the board, and had you come to me as the chair, or if this was another time, another chair, protocol is always that you come to the chair with an issue.
Okay, no, I know.
So we've all been met with elements of surprise, I never liked them, I will never be used to them, I certainly would prefer to be able to work together. Again, it's about building those links.
Absolutely.
So I hear the consensus of the board is that we will proceed with our master board training.
Yep.
Two weeks from today, which, again, is a day that we would normally be together anyway for our workshop, it's been on our calendar for months and months and months, so it's not, that was part of the accommodation to keep it on our schedule. So I will be in touch with FSBA and let them know we will be proceeding, whether it be four board members and the superintendent, or five, if you let me know today, we will proceed with that. And also, reminder, board members, that immediately after that training at 5:01 time certain, we must bring to order our budget tentative hearing meetings, so. And I have no other comments at this point that haven't already been covered.